All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We'll take the roll call, please.
Gibson?
Here.
Hapler?
Here.
Cole Carney?
Here.
Ormsby?
Here.
Satterfield? Stoltenberg?
Here.
Wenland?
Here. All right. Thank you. We had minutes from the last meeting of July 19th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the minutes from July 19th, 2023 are submitted.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from July 19th, 2023. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Oops, sorry Lynn. The minutes are approved. All right. Good evening. Welcome, everyone. We have a pretty full audience tonight, so we'll look forward to your contribution at the appropriate time. We are the Plan and Zone Commission, a recommending body to the city council. So everything that comes out of this meeting goes to the city council for final approval. We give our recommendations. Planning and zoning matters, site plans, land use maps, things like that are our purview. So at the appropriate time, we've got a podium to my right and to your left back there. We'd love to have your input. We'll have you come back to the podium, state your name and interest in a case. That's usually after the commission has a chance to talk about it first. And with that, Greg, we will begin.
Mr. Chairman, our first case tonight is 23053, which is Hope Heights Edition Preliminary Platte. The area is located right along Criswell Street and Hopewell Avenue. The area outlined in Aqua is what is being discussed. It is the applicant is Yousi Investments of Iowa LLC, and they are looking to gain approval of a 48 lot platte. The area is currently zoned R3, conditionally zoned, and I'll go into that later on in the report. Mixed use residential, mixed residential district, that is, allows single-family duplex and townhouse development, which is what is being proposed for this development. Future land use designation shows UMI here, urban medium intensity and urban low intensity throughout most of the area surrounding the parcel as described. We go to the concept plan that was originally proposed. What has occurred in the interim is the developer has decided to take these units here, these townhouse units, and remove them from the bordering area here along the south in this area here, and replace these with single-family units, and then four larger single-family here. This area up here now will be covered by the larger townhouse four-unit developments and structures, and this will be maintained as the same right here. The duplexes will be here, and there's one duplex up here, as you will see, on this preliminary platte. So the townhouses will go up on these lots here, a duplex here, the larger single-family units from lots 22 through 25 will go here, or townhouse units in the center, and then these duplexes here will act somewhat as a buffer to the single-family. But the remaining area here is all single-family, plus its detention outlot. So what we've seen is 32 townhouse units, eight buildings total, 10 duplex units, five buildings total, and then 31 smaller single-family units, and then four larger single-family dwellings. Each of these single-family dwellings that is larger will only be permitted, just like all of these other single-family units, to have one access onto the street vis a vis a driveway. And that changes are that there was an increase in duplex development by two units, a decrease in fourplex ranch, so that there's a total decline of 12 units for the townhouses, and then an increase in single-family by two units. There'd be also five-foot sidewalks throughout the entirety of the development. There's an area right here that has been dedicated as further right-of-way for the widening in the future of Criswell Street. Stormwater detention will be taking place in this regional area here, and then a 30-foot wide, a 35-foot wide landscape berm area will face both Hopewell Avenue and Criswell Street. Prior agreement, as I mentioned earlier, and that essentially the conditions in that agreement, that any site development plan submitted shall conform in all material respects to the submitted concept plan. Failure to conform to the concept plan is grounds for district, or I should say denial of approval of the site development plan. In this case, the intensity of the concept plan has been reduced on the site development plan, so that we feel as staff that it clearly follows the intent of what was shown here for the zoning, and it is actually more appealing to the surrounding future development of the area. So staff is making a positive recommendation as this meets goal D, providing housing options and reinvesting in existing neighborhoods, and goal G to attract young people essentially with more affordable housing. Staff would add also that the naming of streets be required on the final platte, and that also any three-unit or greater dwelling unit structure be brought forward as a site development plan, and then also as the condition I mentioned earlier, that only one driveway will be permitted for each dwelling unit. Staff makes a positive recommendation for approval of this preliminary platte. I would ask, are there any questions?
All right. Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Mark, anything since presentation or publication?
I would just like to emphasize two points, Mr. Chairman, and Greg did a good job on touching on these, but the single-family homes that are along Criswell, the drawing that's there, that's provided is to show max buildable space on the lot. They kind of look like duplexes or something. If you look at them closely, they will not be duplexes. They will be single-family homes. The other thing that I think Greg mentioned, but I want to also emphasize, is that this conditional rezoning, it is, it is still materially similar to the concept plan. It's actually less dense. So we went from a concept that was a little more dense originally to a lesser dense concept now. We consider that in the city's favor, so we consider it still materially matching the previous concept.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. Questions and comments regarding this case from the commission, please?
I, I would like, you showed us a copy of the agreement, Greg. Has that actually been executed?
Yes, I mean, it has been signed by our, I should say, the mayor and our city administrator, and this is just a copy that I extracted from the actual meeting proceeding at the third reading of the rezoning.
Okay. I, I appreciate the fact that we have this agreement because we have dealt with this developer in the past, and we've seen multiple, multiple changes along the path to completion. So we've looked at this a couple of times. I think there's some really nice changes here. I always liked the less dense version, and I appreciate the fact that this agreement has been executed and kind of got us locked into the direction we're going.
Good. Others on the commission? Nope. Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope. Okay. We'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case 23-053, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-053, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Okay, thank you. Case 23053 is recommended for approval. Okay, Greg?
Our next case, Mr. Chairman, is a site development plan for a building renovation, and then also further reme, or modifications being made to the site is 23-054. The location is 2777 Eighteenth Street. The building was at one time a degree of oil, and it's right here. It's an oil change place. Eighteenth Street is here. We've got Spruce Hills Drive here, and we have Cumberland Square them all throughout. This is not, this parcel was never part of any plating that occurred as a part of this overall development in Cumberland Square. The applicant is Drive Thru Estates, WDAV, LLV, and the request is to renovate the building and turn it into a drive-through service for coffee and food sales. Currently, it is zoned C2, Community Commercial District, and in that district, limited food sales is a permitted use. The zoning immediately surrounding it to the south, the north, and the east is C2. Over here, we have C1 zoning, Neighborhood Commercial District across the way where Faze Field is. And you'll note that Faze Field is parks and open space here on the future land use map. Everything else surrounding this is all community commercial. There was a prior site development plan passed in 1998. The area shown here in purple is essentially what that building was, and there was an additional area that over here where a gas station had previously been. That was removed. This is the existing structures' location. You still have the same means of entry right here, and we will see that as a cycling effect. That's what we want to see coming through here. This is .49 acres, and this approval was done in 1998. The building itself is going to remain intact. What we're looking for is if you're coming in this direction here through the northwest entry, because this is where the traffic will be cycled through, and there'll be an area over here that'll be paved, and there'll be a retaining wall placed here to provide further stacking to the building itself. Traffic will come around the building. Here's the back of the building, and this is a view from the south, and either can exit out this direction here if one does not want to go through the building where the service will be provided for the coffee. People will pull in here and then order at this location in the interior of the building. They will then exit and come down this direction here, outside the building, and then exit in the southwest means of access, or entry, I should say. But this will be the exit for this. So there's a clockwise cycling through that occurs on this location, and you can better see it on the site plan. Here's where the entry is, the cycling through, parking provided here, parking here, and parking here. There is a, an area for a dumpster here. Additionally, there have been three trees added here. These two trees are going to be removed for line of sight issues. Also, there's a number of utilities going through here, and we don't want that interference. The paved area is going to increase primarily over here on the north side to accommodate the stacking and further parking. And essentially, this is the way that the cycling will occur as if this were, I mean, the doors will remain open too for exhaust purposes, things of that nature. But this is pretty much following the same cycling with far more traffic. But again, the interior design of the building will accommodate the use as a coffee shop. Elevations here show that this is the area where you will have the product being manufactured, and then these are the two doorways right here, showing the means of entry, or I should say exit, means of entry here on the east side, and the traffic cycling through, and then the orders taking place in here, and the people gaining service through that. This is also going to be in a building with the maintaining of an area for storage below in the basement, as you're quite aware of many of these oil places. They do have storage below, and that will be maintained as a part of this structure. Staff wants to make positive rec, will make a positive recommendation on the provisions here, as it meets comprehensive plan goal C, attract and retain business and industry. We would only indicate outside of the general requirement about development, does not waive any other requirements, that no landscaping would be permitted in any utility easement areas. So staff interviewing this proposal makes a positive recommendation for approval. I would ask, are there any questions?
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Mark, anything since publication or presentation?
No, nothing new to present or to share with you. Just want to emphasize that this is not a dine-in facility. It is only available through the vehicle service or a walk-up window. And I think Greg showed you there is a pedestrian pathway striped to that walk-up window from the sidewalk. So it's not a dine-in facility, no interior space for customers unless you're in your car through the drive-through, or you're at the walk-up window. And I do believe the ordering is gone too, and a lot of restaurants are going to this to an app-based ordering system, so there's not a window or a speaker that you talk through. You're using your app, and then you're going through, which is, we're seeing more of that now.
Hear that, everybody? You better get app savvy, because you're not going to get coffee if you don't use your app here. That's, that's interesting approach. That's, I guess, where we're headed. So, good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Questions and comments from the commission with regard to this case?
I have a few. So you said there's going to be a walk-up window. Is there going to be seating outside then, with people walking up for coffee?
They haven't shown that on their site plan.
Okay, and then curious about safety for the workers? If there's two lanes of vehicles coming through, and your prep areas on one side getting through past the cars to the other side, to the second set of cars?
Yeah, that's-
Curious about their plan for that?
Not within our purview, from a planning and zoning standpoint. That would be their interior operations. Maybe the health department would have some requirements for safety.
Is the developer here? I was just curious.
Not really something I have any knowledge of or can speak to.
Mm-hmm. Is the developer here?
I believe they are. I thought I saw them.
Okay, maybe he could answer some of our questions then. And my third question is actually just about the access. Is there access from this site to the parking next door, like for overflow?
Yes, so it's the-
Or is it curbed?
So there is an existing curb right there currently. There is an island that will remain, but I do believe there's cross-access easements across all of Cumberland.
Okay.
They actually own both entrances.
Actually, okay, well, that's tough. I actually do have one more. My other question was, is it exit only? Greg was talking about how entrance would, how it would flow with one entrance and one exit, so you can only come in one way. Is there signage we're putting up for making sure that happens?
That they would have directional signage for the northern entry as entry only, and then the southern would be the exit only. And then they will be increasing the curb length. Greg, if you go down to the southeast corner, yep, there's a curb that's there, so people can't try to sneak in that they're going to extend that curb. So that would be under our purview. We did talk to them a lot about the traffic flow. It's really flowing and stacking as it always has or did. It's been out of business for a couple of years. It's an interesting adaptive reuse.
So if we see stacking like we do for Atomic next to that high school, then what?
They can stack much more than Atomic can stack. Probably three times as much, I would guess.
Yeah, and we had the discussion during development review, and I think at some point, we have to get past the first three months of Atomic, because it's still not the case. We've talked to police department about that. You know, we had massive concerns about the one, there, I should say, there were concerns about QC Fuel, for example, that went in directly across from the high school. It went out of business in six months. The, the business wasn't there, and you know, Atomic has a lot more locations. There's a lot more competition. So we can't use that as a direct comparison because of one location that happened to have a lot of success early on. You know, we have stacking requirements. This doubles it, if not more. So we really need to look at that.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
No, I'm just waiting for questions if you have them.
Yeah, so the question I had for you was just a curi, curious, curiosity about safety for the employees.
Yeah, so in the prep station where they would go and normally, I guess in the building that's past, you'd pay for the oil change. That'll be our prep and manufacturing. They'll make the drink-
In the center of the two stacking lines?
Nope. It's on the south side of the building.
Mm-hmm.
And then they'll make prep and take the drink to the, to the car behind the vehicles as they go. There's no prep station out there in the garage area.
Okay. So they cross pass one line of vehicles to get to the other one?
If that second line is used, yeah. I think you'll notice there's seven or eight cars before we get to that second, but it's definitely possible we'll use it. We hope to use it.
I bet. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with the commission? Nope. Anyone else in the audience with regard to this case? Nope. All right, back to the commission. Oh, hey, I had one question. Sorry. I saw there was an existing pole sign out there. Will they be using the existing pole sign then and re-identifying that then?
The existing, the existing sign is grandfathered under our code, so they're still allowed to use it. It would probably be an allowable sign anyway, just in that district. So their intent is to use that existing pole sign with new, new signage, but use that monopole.
Okay, thank you. All right, last call for this case. That will entertain a motion.
Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, let me find out what case number we're on. Sorry, let's scroll backwards. Wow, that's really tiny. Case number 23-054, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 25-054, site development plan. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Case 23054 is recommended for approval.
Chairman, I recuse.
Oh, okay. Did we pick that up? Please, for the record. Yep. Taylor, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Chairman. Next case on the agenda is 2356. This is a final platte for Highland Ridge First Edition. Brief background on the case, the applicant is E&amp;A Enterprises LLC. The current rezon, the current zoning was established during a rezoning, which established the C1, C2 residential, C2 commercial, R1, and R3. The current area that's going to be platted contains the C1, C2, C2 commercial, and R3. Future land use for this area is UMI and ULI. That's urban low intensity and urban medium intensity. These were established earlier this year, case 2313 and 2321. And as mentioned, the zoning map and those case numbers that are associated with those rezonings. The planning commission first saw this preliminary platte at the July 19th meeting. At that meeting, it was reviewed. There was a number of conditions, amendments that were prescribed by the commission before they went to the city council. So this is that preliminary platte. Shows the townhouses, and then shows two large commercial lots for future development, and then an outlot for stormwater and that open space as well. We had a number of comments. I can kind of, we've, this is the exact slide from that meeting related to fire access and sprinkler code, snow storage, the number dividing outlots, and then staff commented on the location of the intersections and the design of those location, and how, and the consistency with our comp plan for its efficient routing. The applicant returned a preliminary platte addressing those conditions, and this is that platte. They removed a, they moved some lots around to create more snow storage in the cul-de-sac. They also reconfigured lots at the intersection of Crescent Moon Court and Rainforest Drive. So four townhouses will face north towards the commercial on that Rainforest Drive, which reduces the number of lots accessing the court. They also did, there was some labeling that was, that was needed, and they created a separate outlot for open space, stormwater, and created a out, another outlot, which would be a private drive for access to three townhomes in the lower right corner. This was submitted to, or brought forward to the city council. At city council, it was first heard at the committee, the whole, and then voted on last night. They requested a amendment to that August 8 preliminary platte. The amendment related to that outlot with the private drive in the lower right corner. The removal of that drive was requested so that all the townhouse lots have direct access off of Crescent Moon Court with no private drive easement needed or outlot, and that was reconfigured, and that is what this preliminary platte looks like. So lots 37, 38, and 39 now have direct access to Crescent Moon Court, and they will have a driveway, each have an individual driveway. I will mention that the reconfiguration meets all the zoning bulk standards, subdivision code, and those applicable rezoning conditions for this site. So these are all still there. It did require moving the lots a little farther down to create a buffer, well, to keep a buffer from that R3 zoning district and the C2 zoning district. They are both townhouses, but they are in different zoning districts. One has slightly a smaller front and rear yard setback than the other. So this was the preliminary platte that was approved last night at council and associated concept platte, so I can kind of zoom in on this and show you the driveways, the pavement, the sidewalks, the berm, and the prelim, this is just a concept to kind of show a potential layout of commercial. These are not, this is not part of this platte, but it just shows how a potential layout could happen if there were six or seven establishments on that Lot 1 and 40. So you can kind of look at that layout. I will mention that the sidewalks remained in the interior right-of-ways on both sides of the street, and a sidewalk would be extended along Devil's Glen all the way up to the present, an existing pedestrian path on Forest Grove Drive. Moving forward, this final platte before you tonight is with, includes those requested amendments that, by city council from last night's preliminary platte. It is identical to that. It has all of the amendments, and, and I can kind of briefly go over the description of what it contains. This is, again, 40 lots on two outlots. Lots in 1 and 40 are those commercial ones. Two through 39 are the townhouses. 16 townhome lots are in the R3 zoned area. 22 townhome lots are in the C2 zoned area. And they have a different configuration. Some have three building, units, some have four units. But they're all within, they all meet our bulk standards, and those, as mentioned before. This is just the second page of the platte that has curve tables and different parcel statistics for each lot. Given all of that, we, staff contends this meets the intent of the concept from the rezoning. It meets the preliminary platte amendments, meet our subdivision code and our zoning code, and staff recommends approval of this final platte for Highland Ridge First Edition. I can take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. Mark, anything since publication or presentation?
No, Taylor covered the updates from council on the preliminary platte, now final.
Okay, great. Thank you. Questions and or comments from the commission, please? I had, and let me find it. And I'll just mention, this is from David Graham, 6582 BlackBerry Lane across the development, and I'm paraphrasing, feels the number of lots proposed for the townhounds, townhomes is beyond what would be considered a pleasing neighborhood that complements the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Indication that there was no consideration of how everything blends in to make pleasing total neighborhood. The original site plan presented in March of 23 had a very nice townhome layout that blended into the neighborhood very well. I realize that the March was early in the planning, but somewhere between that was then, and now should be considered for the number of townhome lots. And he still has safety concerns about the Rainforest Drive entrance across from the Lakeview Court entrance to Copper Ridge Development, and is assuming that the intersection has been studied sufficiently to address safety concerns. An additional letter had been received, and I think directed maybe to the legal department originally, or ended up there, regarding a information request, and that's from Alan Dirks, 6549 BlackBerry Lane, and he has requested relative to the safety issue that the staff, because they had said the entrance was more safe, and what they're talking about there is having the entrances lined up together, meaning they face each other rather than being offset. Today, they're being proposed to be lined up, and there's been requests from constituents that they be offset, and the city's position has been that it's safer to be lined up than offset. And he's asking for any safety studies and reports in the city's possession, and any emails, texts, or messages about those safety concerns between any member of the city staff council, NP and Z. Subject is chapter 22 of the Iowa Code. So those will be noted and added to the record as well. Any other questions or comments from those on the commission with regard to this case? I had one, just regarding the right-of-way. Devil's Glen is currently a given size. I think it's in the plan eventually to widen it. Is the right-of-way out there for the widening of Devil's Glen? out there for the widening of Devil's Glen in the future?
Yes. Sorry, right. Yes, it will be. So as part of this, there's an additional, Taylor, can you zoom in on that?
Yeah, it's a little pixelated.
Twenty-foot right of way dedication note right there.
Yeah, that's right.
So that'll bring us to a total right of way width of a hundred feet, which is standard from Devil's, on Devil's Glen from fifty-third all the way up to Forest Grove.
And it's always contemplated a couple lanes southbound, a left turn lane.
Will be a four lane section sometime in the next five years. It's currently in year four or five in our capital improvement program with talks of maybe moving that up sooner. All depends on what council ultimately decides. But that right of way width is sufficient for a five lane section at the intersection. So we actually presented that to council last night. So that would be two southbound lanes.
From starting at Forest Grove.
On Devil's Glen, sorry, on Devil's Glen. Yeah, so right turn lane.
From Forest Grove South, okay.
One left turn lane, dedicated left turn lane for westbound movements to head west onto Forest Grove. One through lane to head north because we know that's never going to go across the interstate. Ultimately, there's a chance maybe depending on the density around there that you could need to probably, our, our study does not show that. Let's say that right now. And then one dedicated right turn lane, that center turn or center through lane could have multiple functions depending on how the next ten years of growth occurs. You could end up with a center only, you could end up with a center and right turn lane, kind of similar to what we have in Utica Ridge. But yes, we have enough for five lanes, the existing trail plus a six-foot sidewalk on the west-hand side.
Okay, and that would be a ten-foot trail on there as well?
There already is on the east side.
On the east side, okay.
That would remain.
Sorry. And then is there any update in the timeframe for the proposed or pending stoplight at that intersection?
It'll be constructed in the spring.
Spring.
Final design is currently underway. We've already got some of the equipment ordered and that'll go up basically as soon as we can get the materials.
So today at different times of the day, you can see or experience pretty substantial backups as they work their way through. Obviously, it flows better than no stop sign there, which was on no stop sign on Forest Grove. Do you expect that the traffic's going to flow better ultimately with the traffic?
Absolutely, because we'll be able to time out those gaps. So you can provide more time during your peaks like we do on any other traffic signal, your mornings and your afternoons, and be able to provide gapping as well as you head down on Hopewell.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Others on the commission regarding this matter?
Is outlot A to be retention, water retention? Is that dry or means for it to be mostly?
I don't believe we have seen at that point. They still have the option as long as it meets the overall volume. We don't have final construction plans, so we don't know if it's going to be wet or dry yet. I don't know if I, I do see the engineer. Benjamin from Townsend Engineering. We don't know that yet. It's, I think it's going to be dry is my feel right now, but we will address that as we continue with the project.
Sure, that would be preferential for the homeowners that are adjacent to it or their yards back up to it. So I hope that works out. Thanks for your time, Ben.
The existing one in the, for the home development doesn't seem like it's been that well maintained. I don't know if that's a developer issue or a homeowner's issue, but that's been left to get pretty ugly over there.
There's been some issues with, and unfortunately nothing the city can get involved in, but the transfer of ownership between the homeowners association and the outlots on several of the Valley Winds.
And that's a wet, designed to be a wet pond?
All of them in Valley Winds are wet.
Okay.
So there's supposed to be a transfer where someone is responsible for maintaining it?
Ultimately, from the city's end, it's the current property owner. But I know I've heard from several residents over the last five years in other Valley Winds additions that there were some issues about accepting ownership of transfer from McCarthy to the homeowners associations. All things that the city can't get involved in. Fund balances, the current state of things, things like that.
It's, I know it's created some consternation about detention and everything out there because of that way that one's been not maintained properly.
I think the only real concern I think we've heard from there is that there was a fountain aerator that at some point stopped working and has not been replaced.
Grass growing up and other things, but yeah, okay. Others from the commission? All right, anyone in the audience with regard to this case? Okay, come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval. Case twenty-three dash oh five six, subject to staff recommendations.
A second. Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case twenty-three dash zero five six. Final plat for Highland Ridge First Edition. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Twenty-three oh five six is recommended for approval. Okay, Taylor.
Thank you, Chairman. Next case on the agenda is twenty-three dash five seven. This is a final plat for FG eighty Holdings Fourth Edition. So it's a replat. Little background on this, the applicant is Kevin Kellner, focus of Focus Real Estate Development. The location is northeast of Forest Grove Drive and Middle Road, which is currently under construction in this photo. We have a future land use designation as community, community commercial. And the current zoning is C-three general business district. Shown on the screen is the currently recorded plat for this location. That is FG eighty Holdings Second Edition. This was previously approved by, recommended for approval by the planning commission and voted for approval by council. The previously approved subdivision contains a total of eight lots. Lot three and lot four, I will note, have approved site development plans, recommended for approval by this commission and approved by council. Those relate to the Iron T Golf Complex and associated sports entities to the north. All other lots north, so in that location, have no associated site development plans. So they're undeveloped. The new, newly proposed plat of FG eighty for Holdings Fourth Edition primarily differs from the previous plat by reconfiguring a large track of land right here. It was, is made up of multiple lots. It's reconfiguring it for a larger user located just on the north or southwest corner there or the northeast corner of Competition Drive and Middle Road. Other lots reconfigured, shape, geometry. Some easements were adjusted as well for those reconfigurations. But the primary difference is that and they have a total of seven lots now. I will note that currently approved site development plans of one is currently under construction, that the Iron T complex. The proposed replat keeps the development in compliance with the bulk standards of our zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. So those, from the lot lines perspective, are currently still in place. Access is still given to all these lots. The bike path and the proposed bike bridge are shown on here. There'll be a combined easement and stormwater on lot C and you can kind of see that. Zoom in a little bit, but you can kind of see how that will, that bridge will be right around here and you can see how the bike path will come to the entrance of the Iron T complex drop-off and entry point. So there's just a little, a lot of moving parts here, but the main differences were pointed out with that reconfiguration. And we have a couple more pages of the plat. They're just larger scale versions of certain lots. Otherwise, this plat does meet our subdivision ordinance, meets all zoning code. And that's, staff does recommend approval for this final plat of FG Holdings Fourth Edition and I can take any questions.
Thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Mark, anything from, since publication or presentation?
No, nothing to add. I would just say that really you're just taking four individual lots for the most part, making one larger lot to accommodate a potential user.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. What's the rough timeframe? Is that a twenty-five construction for that bed bridge?
We're under design right now. So we have to time it out with both the interchange and the completion of everything else out there. It'll probably be a late twenty-four bid and twenty-twenty-five construction.
Does it have to, it doesn't have to pre-exist or can't? Do we have to wait for the interchange to happen? We just have to have the designs compatible?
Stepping on each other's toes, basically.
Okay, that'll be a great addition out there. Awesome.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add to Mark's comments is this is very similar to what we experienced with TBK. You will probably have another couple additions out here, I would guess, over the next year or so as potential tenants become available.
Recently, there was an announcement about another hotel going out there and now this big unknown user and yeah, the momentum's out there for sure. Thank you. Questions or comments from others on the commission with regard to this case? Anyone, yep. Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number two-three dash zero five seven, subject to staff recommendations.
A second, Ted.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case twenty-three dash zero five seven. Final plat, replat for FG eighty Holdings South, our Fourth Edition. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Twenty-three dash oh five seven is recommended for approval, which would take us to twenty-three oh fifty-five.
Thank you, Chairman. Case twenty-three oh fifty-five, fifty oh seven, fifty-third avenue will be the address. This is lot one of Legacy Corner Southeast, a site development plan for Quick Star. The applicant is Quick Trip Inc. This is like I mentioned on lot one of Legacy Corner Southeast. This is the southeast corner of Middle Road and fifty-third avenue. Proposal is for a Quick Star gas station to include ten gas pumps or twenty vehicle stalls, a car wash and a convenience store. And the lot is outlined in green. Future land use map designate, designates this area as neighborhood commercial. The current zoning is C-two community commercial district. The Board of Adjustment, I will add, had a number of, a case for this approving two special use permits. The following special use permits were approved. Gas sales related to convenience store, more than four pumps. A condition was added for a maximum of ten pumps. And another condition was added for a removal of a previous special use permit, which would allow a gas station on the northwest corner up here. Both of those conditions have been met by the proposal and the Board of Adjustment rescinded their approval at a subsequent meeting. And then the other approval was for one car wash, which is a special, both are special permitted uses in the C-two district. The final plat for Legacy Corner Southeast, so is given a positive recommendation by staff and P and Z and was approved by city council. Lot one, as mentioned, is the proposed site of the Quick Star development. Lot two contains an access easement to Middle Road for lot one. And outlot A, shown in the southwest corner, will serve lot one and lot two for stormwater detention. I'll kind of briefly touch on this and move on to some clear site plans. But this is the combined site plan. This shows your grading, your utility connections and your dimensions for the development. I will touch that the current page shows access connections to Middle Road down here on that existing curb cut and stormpipe and storm utility connections to that graded, currently graded stormwater pond on outlot A. Moving to the clearer picture of the dimensional site plan, point out a couple of the developments, characteristics. A total of forty off-street parking spaces are provided for the gas station. That does not include those vehicle stalls, including three ADA spaces. That primary, the primary access is located off fifty-third avenue. So we'll have a, exists, a new access here that will align with an existing field access point that's on the north side of fifty-third for an undeveloped property. An additional access as mentioned on the previous page will be off of Middle Road on an existing curb cut. There is stacking shown for that car wash, I should mention. Acquired six spaces. There's more than six spaces provided with the car shown for this site plan. A service walk is shown connecting to the front entrance of the convenience store. So they'll have a striped section across the parking lot and then a stairs, pedestrian stairway going up a slight incline to the existing bike pad trail, but they also provide a ramp which goes to a little farther to the east and connects there as well. We have just our general locations of certain amenities. The configuration moving from east to west is we have a landscape buffer abutting the residential development to the east. That's a roughly sixty, sixty foot, sixty feet plus landscape buffer. And then we have a thoroughfare drive, which will have, provide access to future development on lot two. A landscape island, which will contain some trees, lighting, a camera, which would face towards the gas station for security. And then moving farther west, we have the canopy and the gas pumps. And then farther west, even further, we have the building. That's roughly eight thousand square foot convenience store. That includes the prep area for cooking, the store area, and I believe it has some tables inside too for eating or at least a counter. The car wash is located farthest from the residence to the east and that is located right here. So you have the stacking then going in there. We have a dumpster location and this is a very similar layout to our other Quick Stars in the area that we screened and located there. We do have that other two directional ingress and ingress onto that lot that goes to Middle Road to the southwest. Taking a look at the landscape plan that was provided. There's a lot of trees located or shown for this, this site. Almost nearly double the amount required by code and a lot, some are being preserved that are existing on the site. Total of thirty-three overstoryed trees and eleven evergreen trees are shown in the plan. Additional shrubs and plantings are included near the building, next to the car wash and next to that pedestrian access point near the stairway and the ramp. There are existing right of way trees on the city right of way at this property. The goal is to preserve as many trees as possible there. They will need to remove some for that new curb cut. And upon the future, at a future time, they'll be determined what additional trees need to be taken down for sightline considerations. So we have a safe exit and entrance for traffic entering this lot. The, as I mentioned, there was a landscape buffer to the east, roughly sixty-two foot. This is shown the side and contains those eleven evergreens. And I will mention the landscape plan has all the details in here of the tree species. They will be planted at, you know, I believe ten foot for the evergreens and different heights. But the maturity levels, the maturity heights for these trees, for the evergreens specifically are fifty to sixty-five feet tall. So you'll have an additional wall of trees with seeded grass right there. This is adjacent to a berm, which is located on the residential development to the east. The berm contains a fence and then more trees and then the residential development. So you have quite a bit of buffering and screening located on this site. Additional screening and landscaping is pride to the south for any future development, commercial development to the south. And then some trees on the front, streetscapes on the front yards on fifty-third avenue and Middle Road. And the applicant did provide an additional rendering of that landscape plan this week. So I added that, add some color to it. Same layout. You can see the pavement and the plantings there. We'll talk about the sign placements. We have directional signage on building signage, which we've, everyone should be familiar with from other Quick Stars. The monument sign will have an LED screen component to it. And it's proposed to be located in the northwest corner of the development right here. The maximum height for that sign is twenty feet when it's outside the building setback and it's shown outside that building setback on the proposed site plan. So it does be, I believe it's going to be nineteen feet, so it's a little under that maximum. I do have a rendering of that shown here. So it has a day and a night view, mostly a black background for some contrast. We have a photo, the applicant did submit a photometric plan, not acquired by the city, but we do have a practice for, from past site development plans for not exceeding light spillage of over one foot candle on the property line. So I'm not going to zoom in on each of these, but each of these is a number, these little points. And they're showing the number of foot candles on each little parcel. When looking, zooming in, you'll, this black line, I believe is five, point five foot candles. And then the property line over here, zero foot candles. And I believe the, there's only a couple places other than thoroughfare. And then the property line over here, zero foot candles. And I believe the only, there's only a couple places, other than thoroughfares, that we have to light those thoroughfares for traffic and pedestrians. They're all at point one foot candles. And we have a rendering of that photometric plan, so you can kind of see what the lights would look at, like from an aerial perspective. The applicant did provide some renderings. So this is kind of all sides of that, of the building. We have the entrance, car wash, dumpster located here. All sides of that building. There are some outdoor seating provided with umbrellas and photos. An additional many, I do not recall that is existing on some of the other Quick Stars in the region. This is the rendering of the gas pumps and the canopy. And then the applicant provided an additional rendering this week, so I'm going to share it. Kind of a total view of the site, a view from Fifty-third Street looking southwest. So I believe I've covered many characteristics and analysis for the site. Staff contends this does meet our bulk standards. It meets our lighting, landscaping setbacks. It meets the conditions set by the Board of Adjustment for those special use permits. We believe the applicant went above and beyond for the landscaping, providing more than required, adding that additional buffering and screening on the east side to mitigate any light or probably noise as well. And given all of the, all items mentioned, staff is recommending approval of the site plan for fifty oh, seven, Fifty-third Avenue. And I can take any questions.
All right. Thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Mark, anything since publication or presentation? No. All right. Questions and comments from the commission, please? I had one. How, how long has that corner, I think maybe all four corners have been zoned commercial the way it is? Any feel for that?
I, I won't be exact. We did review this and during the Board of Adjustment cases. And it has been over twenty years or right about then that it was zoned C-two. It was rezoned similar before the residential development was zoned. So it happened kind of subsequently or right before, and then the residential development was zoned to its present state. And it was owned, owned, it's owned by the, it was owned, I should say, by the same developer, the fix.
Yep. And I'll note, and that a question had come up, and I have here a number of copies of emails that were sent in to the office. Kimberly Ordones, O-R-D-O-N-E-Z, talking about believing that a gas station added this location may be a bad idea. Don't want to endure additional traffic at the location, creating problems and traffic jams. And would like something that's family friendly and just keep the traffic flowing. Had an email from Lindsay Asta, A-S-T-A. My family and I are residents of Century Heights. Behind the proposed Quick Star on Fifty-third, hope to take our wishes into consideration and not allow this type of business to go in. We walk our dogs, run and children ride bikes in these paths, concerned about Bettendorf losing its green space to enjoy and nature to live. And they currently, we currently, the city of Bettendorf, I think they're referencing, has three Quick Stars within a one and a half mile radius of our homes. We do not wish to have one closer and happy to make the short drive to others. Jerry Jasdrab, J-A-S-D-R-A-B, in opposition to the Quick Star at this location, noting that the three Quick Stars are within a one mile radius. That varies. I've had them in here between one and two, so, or two and a half. So it's somewhere in that zone. I didn't check them all out myself. Why do we need another one? Concerned about in ten to fifteen years, this will become an empty abandoned property, given the change to electric vehicles. If you want to let a service station set up there, consider EV flash charging instead. Four corners of Fifty-third and Middle should be rezoned residential. There's a strong demand for housing, and these lots have sat empty for twenty-plus years, generating very little tax revenue. I don't think the city needs any more strip malls, car washes, health clinics or banks along Fifty-third Avenue. I strongly support converting these lots to residential, which is a more viable long-term alternative and revenue source. Ellen Barnes, like to provide feedback on the proposed, proposed Quick Star. I don't believe you'll find any neighbor in this area who's happy to see the proposal of a gas station at this location. This location is not in high need of this type of commercial property. It's located within two miles of three other Quick Stars. This is an oddly zoned area that essentially puts a property typically seen in a larger commercial area directly into a neighborhood. We're concerned with traffic flow for a variety of reasons, coming off the roundabout, fear of accidents, and being so closely connected to the roundabout. Also concerned about the height of landscaping at the center of the roundabout, which will only further complicate this. This person is a fan of Quick Star and has no issues, but there are many others in the city that could provide much-needed access to gas grocery items. And this is not the case for Middle Road and Fifty-third. There would be another of, number of other venue types that would be a more appropriate, such as banks, restaurants, coffee shops and small, small businesses. And then also raised a note about the size of our notice signs, and the print is too small, and they are small, but that's what the code provides for. Can't change that, but maybe we should someday. Writing this, this is David Hankins, H-A-N-K-I-N-S, writing with some concerns about the Quick Star, but he's out of town and couldn't attend. Intersection is always quite, already quite busy. Me, my family and I use the bike trails daily for exercise and to walk to businesses. And the trails are always busy with foot and bike traffic. Adding a Quick Star would make pedestrian use much more dangerous. Based on multiple experiences on the bike path in front of the Quick Star in Devil's Glen, where he's almost been hit by cars that zip in and out. And there's already a Quick Star at TBK, so that one's close enough. Or make it a park. It would be lovely space for a park. Michelle Hankins, H-A-N-K-I-N-S. Sad to see spaces filled instead of open to wildlife, but I understand the necessity. This area is used very heavily for pedestrian and other non-motorized traffic. It would make the traffic much higher and unsafe for non-motorized traffic. There are also Quick Stars with several within a mile or two. How many times a day can we possibly gas up a vehicle? Large percentage, you'd be surprised. And just, this is anecdotal, maybe the Quick Star person here, but I was going to get gas for my lawnmower the other day and I was just watching, given this dynamic at the Quick Star in Devil's Glen. And it seemed to me, and this is anecdotal, but about half the people came in and never got gas. They just went in out of the convenience store, so they didn't even buy gas. I don't know if that number's accurate. That was Roy's fifteen-minute assessment. A lower traffic commercial interest would be more welcome in that space. If a Quick Star went in, I believe property values would be lowered as the noise pollution and physical pollution increases as well. Just a couple more. Adam Lamar and then Whitney Lamar, both of the same address with two emails. Lifelong resident of Bettendorf and lives on White Post Road. Well-established neighborhood with a large investment in Bettendorf tax dollars and feels a gas station in residential backyards is almost sabotage. I believe my wife has already sent an email, which I'll get to momentarily. I don't think conveyed my true feelings. I cannot stress enough how terrible this idea is. And then he talked about the speed limits. We have people driving fifty, sixty and seventy miles an hour down Fifty-third as it is. The court that we live on constantly has children playing and the kids should be safe going outside. As a parent, I'm extremely nervous about the increased turnaround traffic that this could cause. And then also about the number of Quick Stars that are within one point two, one point seven and two point one. I'm taking that as the more accurate distances. And then Whitney, residents of the same address, not in support of the Quick Star. There are other, three other Quick Stars within a two and a half mile radius. Accidents occur on the roundabout. And we feel a gas station would cause further traffic and congestion. So those are paraphrases pretty close to complete. And those will be also entered into the record for tonight. So anyone else with the commission regarding this matter? Nope?
I, I do want to ask a question, and it's probably more of a generic question. But we, you talked, Taylor, about the enhancement of the landscaping and the number of trees and, which is awesome. I'm, I'm happy to see that. What is the, we, we always look at landscaping plans and we have requirements for trees. And I have noticed several of the developments that we've approved. They put in the trees, but they don't take care of the trees. And within a year, the trees are dead. And so they met our requirement to plant the trees, but the trees aren't there. Does the city have any leverage? I'm not suggesting that would happen here, but is that something we have leverage over?
Yep, we absolutely do. So we can require a landscaping plan to be, to be met. Now, I will be honest with you, we don't drive around and look for every dead tree on every development that's ever been built in the city of Bettendorf. That would be in a new amount of time. But we certainly have the authority to require the property owner, developer, to, to meet that site development plan in perpetuity.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a note of that, just in case I happen to.
Sounds like you might need to make a call to inspection department.
Yeah, I have, I have a list.
Yeah, no kidding.
I, I don't have any questions, but I would like to make a couple of comments. I was involved in the comprehensive plan over twenty years ago. And this area has been designated for commercial in both the comp plan and in zoning for some time. It's at an arterial intersection, which is the most logical place in our city, we, where we would locate a gas station. I, not for the first time tonight, we've heard comments about green space. And I think when we live in an area that abuts undeveloped land, we tend to define it as green space when basically it's land owned by a private party and they have chosen not to develop it yet. And in a case like this, the development has progressed to the north over a number of years. And as a developer, choices have been made not to go into this area until there's enough residential property out there to support it. So from my perspective, looking at the comprehensive plan, the zoning, all of the neighborhoods that we've approved, developing to the north over a period of time. It all makes sense to me. And that land's been empty because it's been waiting for the development to occur. And the other thing I think that was very savvy in the development of this area. We always look at duplexes as a buffer between more intensive uses and residential. So having the duplexes wrap that commercial area is really the way we look at our planning. And so from where I sit, nobody likes to see a big change in their backyard, but it happens. I have a neighbor who just cut down ten trees in their backyard, and I don't like that. But it's his yard and he can do whatever he wants to with it. I can't really, I can't get those trees back. So I just wanted to make those comments before we ask questions.
Yeah, no, that's good, good perspective. And I've worked with you for probably sixteen years of those twenty, and we've been through a lot of comprehensive plans and things. And, and one of the things we also, and we're going to give you plenty of time to talk. We encounter a lot, our comments that are relative to what I would call an owner's ability to use the property in the fashion that's lawful. So in this case, even though a gas station, as useful it might be for certain people, is not necessarily appealing for others. But that laws, that use is lawful. And this commission doesn't have the ability to deny someone a lawful use of their property. So that's something that we can sympathize with you in many cases, but we're also constrained from the standpoint that we can't do something that's unlawful for a lawful use. We can't, we can't tell them no. We've, we've been through this many times. Examples over my tenure would be storage buildings. There were storage building after storage building. Then it was car wash after car wash. It's just kind of like, how can there possibly be another one? I can even remember as recently as a couple of years ago, when the Aldi development came in, we had people coming in and adamantly and truly believing that there was no purpose in Bettendorf or an Aldi. There are enough grocery stores and there's one right down the street and there's one around the corner. How can you possibly let that happen? Every time I go to Aldi, it's full. So again, it's not our choice to make and it's not our ability to prohibit. So just keep that in mind as you process what's happening out here. It's, it's, if it's legal, it's one thing, but we really don't have the latitude and the ability to tell somebody, oh, you can't do that, even if somebody says, I got enough of them. We don't have that right. It's kind of like you live on your street and everybody's got two-story houses and somebody wants to put a one-story and they say, well, no, it's got to be two stories. Well, I want to put a one-story. There's nothing that says you can't put a one-story house in there. Well, all the neighbors don't want it. Well, but I've owned that lot and I want a one-story house. I, I hope that helps. Again, we sympathize. I can, I can feel what you guys are going through. But I want you to also recognize from our side, some of the constraints that we have to operate under. So.
I think it may be helpful too, Roy, if Brent could talk a little bit about the roundabout, because there were a lot of issue, or a lot of concerns about how that roundabout currently functions and adding traffic flow to it.
Yeah, that roundabout is, I think, twenty-two, twenty-three years old, somewhere in that range. It was easily the first one in the Quad City, one of the first ones in the state, if I'm correct. Compared to today's standards, so what you're seeing constructed out of TBK with the four that we have in that area. These are older standards that it was built on. It's easier to take that at higher speeds. Approach angles. So when you come into the roundabout right now, it's a fairly simple angle. You really want to make those extreme as you can to make drivers slow down and have to essentially, you know, turn, turn over your left shoulder and look to the left. That one's a little easier. So I think we see a little higher speeds through there. We have very little accident history though, which is somewhat surprising, given the, the size through it. We check this yearly. Every time we have something out here, we talk to the police department and we really do have a relatively minor. But in the other aspect, I think that Janice's point is, we currently have been awarded a study, a federal grant to do a study on Middle Road. To finish the engineering design at least, we don't have construction dollars, but the engineering design from the TBK project all the way down to Crow Creek Road, which will have our final layout. So that's widening to four lanes. That's redoing that roundabout. Probably installing a roundabout to help well as well. The temporary traffic signals will stay in until then. But that will be adjusted at some point, but in the interim, it will obviously have to remain.
So is there anything we can do in the interim to make it more safe with additional?
It's not unsafe. That's ultimately why.
I would agree. I live over there. I drive it all the time. I haven't had any personal problems myself, but I'm just saying with the added traffic of the gas station. Is there anything you feel is needed?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else on the commission? Scott?
Yeah, I, I concur with various comments that have been made. I'm glad to hear there will be some updates to that roundabout at some point. I mean, I think we learned quickly after it was put in that it wasn't installed quite right. It should have been, having to look over your left shoulder a little more than being able to see straight ahead where you're going through. Doesn't make sense, but it would also be nice with some education for the community. But by the time we have four or five of them, I think that by itself will help educate everybody as to how to actually move through them. And I've found in that roundabout, more traffic, the more traffic is there, the more it is used properly. The fewer cars that are there, the faster everyone's traveling. So it actually, from that aspect, it could help. As far as this development goes, as Ann said, I've been here just almost as long, within a month, I think of Ann. And, and I was on that land use plan committee way back then. This has been designed, set up to have exactly what is being presented ever since then. Anyone that owns any property around there, this has always been the plan. They should have always been told that this was the plan. I can't for the life of me understand why Quick Star wants to put another gas station so close to all the other ones. But as Roy said, that's not up to me. You'll have a chance to speak in a moment. That's, it's not up to me. That's, it's not up to me to decide whether another gas station there is economical or not. That's up to Quick Star to decide. As far as the, what I see on this project is this landscaping and the setup, how they're putting this together. It's been a long time since I seen a developer come in the first time with a plan that looks this clean to begin with and is actually very much taking into consideration lighting, sound, traffic patterns. That buffer between the actual pumps and the back doors of those houses there on Red Fox Road, that is incredible, really. I mean, we don't see that around town. I would be surprised if those folks, when this is all done and those trees are up five years or so, if they really hear much at all of what's going on over at the Quick Star. It's probably going to also shield a lot of the traffic noise that you hear now on Middle Road because of those trees. Again, assuming that the trees are put up and are maintained and replaced if they start to die. Ann does have a point there. I've seen this on numerous commercial sites all over the Quad Cities, actually, where they'll come in, they'll tear down a tree and, because it's dead and they never put one back up. So hopefully that won't be a problem. But I think it's a, based on the fact this is always planned to be here, this is a great looking project. Whether or not it's financially viable, again, is not for us to decide. I'm just glad to see that it's being done correct for what was planned.
All right, this is the audience. And if you want to talk, I'm going to put you back at the podium back there so we can get your name and pick you up on the audio recording, if you would, sir.
We have another.
You got to tell us who you are first.
My name's Wally Fairfield.
Okay, Wally.
I live at 5169 Red Fox Road.
Great, thank you.
We have another one of people from our board that's going to come up and do the presentation. I just want to correct something that two of those people said. For 20 years, this has been approved for this. That's incorrect. They asked for, it was approved for a small four-pump gas station. That was what the C2 coating was. They gave a, whatever you call it, the first time we met here, to okay to raise it to the other one. So you're wrong in saying it's always been coated this way. That's not true.
Just, just a correction, sir. It's always been planned to be a gas station. I did not say what size gas station, how many pumps.
You said like this.
Like this.
A gas station, a gas station.
Well, there's a lot of difference between a four-pump and a 20-pump.
Okay, appreciate it, Wally.
Hi, I'm Lynn Davis, 5273 Red Fox Road. You've addressed, can you hear me now?
A little better. Yep, thanks.
You've addressed some of the concerns we have with regard to the roundabout. My question to you is, why is the roundabout not being completed before a project of this size is put in? It doesn't make sense. It seems to be a backwards kind of process. Also, with regard to your comments on commercial development, we all accept that commercial development was going to go into that area. There's commercial development and there's commercial development. By that, I mean some places are very aesthetically pleasing, where the buildings are appropriate. And I can give you an example. It would be the building elements of design. It's a brick building. It's a commercial product, process or a commercial building. And it's a lovely building. We have no objection to something like that. And so for you to say, yes, this is zoned commercial, you have to take into consideration the aesthetics of the neighborhood. There are residences all around that neighborhood. And to put something like a gas station in that area is, for me, inappropriate. But that's another thing we can't deal with right now. If you could please put up Exhibit G, which is the, where all the signage is going. The sign that is on the corner of 53rd and Middle Road is a 19 and a half foot sign. It seems like that, the height of that sign is inappropriate for that area. We have residences to the north, the south, the east and the west. And to have a sign of that height is going to be very obtrusive to that neighborhood. So I'm wondering if you can somehow amend the height of that sign to a more appropriate level. I've been in communities where I've traveled in this country that have signage that is very low. You can, you can see it, but it's very low, not something 19 and a half feet. So if you could consider that, that would be helpful. Also, on, going back to that Exhibit G, if you could scroll up a little bit to the plat that's below. I know it's not an approved plan, but for that special, that south plat, it's indicating that there's going to be two restaurants, two retail stores and a drive-through restaurant. I know that's not a finalized plan, but I think you need to reconsider how much traffic that will generate in that neighborhood in addition to having a Quick Star there. Where are the entrances and exits going to be for that? Are they going to be into Red Fox Road? Are they going to be on Middle Road? Where are they? Whatever design, make it consistent with the things in the neighborhood, like the elements of design or the buildings that Genesis put up for their medical clinics. Basically, I'm concerned that it really will ruin the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And I agree with every, all the letters that came in and all the people that have made comments.
Okay, thank you. Brent, can you just address real quick the chicken and egg problem between the road and?
Yeah, I think we have to really realize when we say that it's going to be looked at for future, that is exactly that. It's future. So we're talking full needs on probably usually a 50-year horizon. We do 30 and 50 years for traffic studies. That roundabout will need to be expanded someday in the future. Right now, bringing in a three-acre site on 53rd and Middle is not a, it's a negligible impact to that roundabout.
So the, and I'm going to paraphrase for you. Tell me if I'm right or wrong. So the current roundabout design is more than adequate to handle the existing plus known proposed development traffic load.
Yes.
And then some substantially then some.
Yes.
Yeah. And the height of the sign, I actually had called in and asked that same question myself. It struck me as, as high. And I'll mark or Taylor, I'll let you address, but I was advised that that is within the height stipulations of our current code.
So it is.
Go ahead, Mark. We can't change the code overnight. It's the current code. We're not going to go back and forth here, but Mark, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out that that sign is shown as 19 and a half on this, but that sign is not officially approved until a sign permit comes in. And so at the sign permit phase, we double check then that it meets all of our code requirements relative to placement and height. And so all that can be done. This commission also could, if they wanted to, condition the sign to be a shorter height, if you wanted to. That is not staff recommendation because 19 and a half feet relative to the overall height of the, of the actual building, the sign is less than the building. So you certainly have that authority if you wanted to add that condition. That's not a staff recommendation.
Yeah. I didn't like the sign height either. So I would be inclined to support a condition like a lower sign. I don't know what height is enough, but 19 and a half feet from my perspective just seemed to overpower it somewhat too. Do we have Quick Star developer here tonight? We do. Okay, well, we'll kind of take notes and then we'll address some of those things as we go along, okay? All right, hope you got your body armor tonight. So yeah, all right, good. This is all, this is all healthy. It may not feel comfortable. This is good. So, all right, yes, sir.
Hi, can you hear this?
Yep.
I'm Tom Golden. I just moved into 5172 Red Fox Road on July 1st, my wife and I. And I met some of the neighbors, but now I guess I'm greeted by a Quick Star now, which is interesting. I'm not exactly behind it, but I'm here to fight with the rest of them. On the 62-foot buffer they have on the east side of the building, if you look at it, we have a fence line six foot high. And right on the other side is a seven and a half foot, I mean, seven and a half foot utility easement that runs right behind it, that you can't build on. And I heard you can't do landscaping on an easement. So we're seven and a half foot where our fence is. So they would have to be seven and a half foot from the utility easement, right? So the 62-foot, is that reduced by 15 feet or is the 62-foot start after 15 feet?
I'm going to ask Taylor. I'm hearing your math, but I'm going to have him put it on the ground.
The buffer, the buffer area is just a space where no construction. It's purely for separation of development from the lot line. So what can be within that buffer, sometimes we have berm's within buffers. We have landscaping, which like trees, fences. In this case, it's just a landscape buffer with trees. On the others' property, which is the residential property, believe you have a berm which is owned by the HOA for that residential development. The fence is on the property line and then there's more trees also owned and maintained by the HOA. I do not know, I have a plat of the, that development. So then there's various easements and what are allowed in those easements. But this buffer can contain those trees where there's situated and there's space, then more empty space closer to the lot line as a.
Well, my question is, you can't, you can't plant on utility easement.
I believe that's correct.
It's nice to figure that tonight. You can't plant in a utility easement.
There is no utility easement.
So it's got to be 15 feet from the fence.
Except easement, utility easement you're talking about, is it on the Quick Star parcel or yours or both?
It's on the other side of our fence, our fence on the.
East side or west side of your fence?
It's on the west side.
Okay.
According to this drawing, it says utility easement seven and a half feet from the fence.
So I can speak to that. On the landscape plan, you have some lines shown. One of these dotted lines is actually the building setback line. And that is a 20-foot setback for the C2 commercial. And those trees are shown within that building setback line. They're not required to be, but the easement would be seven and a half feet. So they'd be outside. Utility easement would be.
The question is 60, it says 62 feet from the property line. Where's the property line? Is it at the easement? Is it seven and a half feet from the easement?
The property line, your easements are with, are recorded over property. So the property line is measured from the line shown here or defined by this final plat. The measurement of that property line to this curb is the 62 feet, 62-foot measurement.
But there could be seven and a half feet of that subject to a utility easement.
Sir, to answer your question, your property line, that rear property line is, at least as close as I can tell in the area, is essentially your fence line. That is your south property, or I'm sorry, your west property line.
So you put a fence on the property line? I don't think you can do that.
Generally speaking, within six inches, you'd have to be on your side, but yes. So actually, technically by, by our current fence regulations, your guy's fence would not have been, it would have, should have been outside the utility easement. That's meant to keep that free of any obstruction, but.
But it shows the utility easement, it shows the utility easement west of our fence.
Yes, so there is one, in total, there's a 15-foot utility easement, seven and a half feet on either side of the property line.
It looks like that's what they cut, yeah, in the grass.
But inappropriately at the time, but it's existing.
Yeah, it was done.
They put the fence on the property line, but there shouldn't have been a fence in the middle of an easement. For plantings, yeah.
But that's not going to be changed now.
No, that's, it is what it is.
You're saying our fence is in the easement?
Yes.
It is. Wally, go ahead.
That fence is 20 years old.
Yep.
Who knows?
Yeah, there's no problem with it. I just want to explain that we're talking.
Tell us what we'd have to do if we got to replace that fence, then what do we do? We would have to come to the city.
Yes, there's a fence permit that is required through planning, but we would grandfather it in its current location.
So we just come and tell you what we're going to do and whoever builds the fence, if we, if we replace it. Okay, thank you.
My other question, maybe to Quick Star, is, is this going to be a 24-hour station?
She nodded yes.
Why? There's no traffic there, period. I sit on my porch at nine o'clock and till about 10, 11, there's not a car going by that place. So it's going to be more of a destination than an actual need, is what I'm seeing. Because there's nothing there. I mean, I get up at 5:30 to go to work. I drive down Middle Road. I see three cars from Red Fox Road to I-74. There is no one out there. So why is this going to be 24 hours? There's three Quick Stars in the area, based on their website, that are closed at 10 or 11. Now, I don't know if that's right, but that's what it says. The one at Belmont says 10 o'clock. And there's one at Eastern in Kimberly is 11 and West Kimberly is 11. So why couldn't it be 10 or 11?
Can't address that.
So the use, the site plan we're approving tonight does not relate to the internal operation of the store. That, those, that operation was granted and not conditioned in any way by the Board of Adjustment, a different body. So hours of operation, that type of thing, how they, how they conduct their business inside their store, that is not before you. You have no jurisdiction over that.
No power, yeah.
I guess the question is, when Belmont reduced their hours, was there a meeting about reducing their hours or they just planned to?
Again, we, Mr. Chairman, we don't operate the stores. We don't have jurisdiction over their hours.
That, that doesn't come in our purview.
The answer's probably yes at corporate. But it has nothing to do with us.
Does the city have any restrictions as to the timing of deliveries and the usage of the car wash? For example, solid trucks will be coming in. Can we have them at least limited between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM? And the car wash as well, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM? Because otherwise, those neighbors are going to be affected very much by the noise of the semis, the noise of the car wash.
So that's not a site plan question. That's an operational question. The Board of Adjustment did not condition hours of operation for this business when they granted that special use permit.
And that's the days or the hours the doors are open or when the deliveries come?
They have, they have that authority. They chose not to exercise it in this case. They did not put any restrictions on this, on this business at all. They said special use permit is granted for this certain amount of pumps and they did not restrict it otherwise.
And so the Board of Adjustment, just, just for informational purposes, is an autonomous board that is not subject to any, like we are, our decisions go to, as I mentioned earlier, to the city council. Our recommendations go to them for approval. The Board of Adjustment, which has granted the approval for the 10 gas pumps and everything else relative to the operation, is an autonomous board that has already ruled or had a decision on this. And that's not anything we have any conditions or control or say in.
So what, when you make a recommendation to the city council for approval, what recommendations do you make?
That they, in this case, it would be that we accept the site plan subject to any changes or recommendations that has been prepared by staff. And then the city council would officially approve this.
So the staff can prepare some recommendations that are.
Not relative to the hours and things like that. There's no, there's no provision that the planning department has over the hours of operation. The Board of Adjustment, and maybe Chris, Chris is our lawyer. He can give you the legal speak on that so I can not misstate it.
I think you've done a good job and I'm, there, these land use issues are complicated because there are so many different types of decisions made. In this particular matter, we're looking at a site plan, which is under the zoning ordinance. And there's a whole appendix in the zoning ordinance on what the commission looks at in approving that. And then ultimately what council will look at in they, in their decision. Again, as Roy said, the commission is a recommending body. And in this case, we aren't looking at the use, the use, the special use, which was granted by the Board of Adjustment, which appeals of the Board of Adjustment, don't go to the city council. They go to district court. So that's a whole separate autonomous body, as the chairman said. The, the issue of hours or operations of a particular business, to be honest, that's not an issue for government. That's an issue for private industry. And in our city code, we are, really don't address hours in very many situations. We have, hours are addressed on food trucks. We have, hours are addressed on food trucks. Hours of operations are addressed in food trucks, which is a whole separate ordinance. Hours of operation for bars, that's set by state code. Hours of operation, maybe to some extent applicable here, there are hours, the issue of hours are addressed with our noise ordinance. And under the noise ordinance, it's measured from the receiving property. And in this case, that would be a residential property. And the decibel level does differ based on hours. Those are really the only times that our city code addresses the issue of hours and operation, and what you can do in particular times of day. And so I don't know if that helps or not, but I do think it's important to understand that what this commission does in looking at a site plan is limited. There's a lot that goes on in a site plan, but there are a lot of things that are not addressed in a site plan.
So what you're saying as well is that the noise ordinance that, over which you do have control, is not applicable in this situation?
No, it is, it absolutely is applicable, and they would need to, they would need to comply with that noise ordinance, yes.
Well, if a semi truck is coming at five in the morning, or the car wash is running at five in the morning, how do we get that remedied?
Well, that's a, that is a, so at that time of day, it's a lower decibel level that's allowed. And so when, when the operator is figuring out how their operation is going to work, and when deliveries are made, and when the car wash is operational, they need to take that into consideration, that there is a lower decibel level that's allowed at four in the morning.
So what, what do the residents do in that case?
Well, if there's a-
What is the process that the resident has to go through?
I'm sorry?
I can actually answer that one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep, so when that happens, if there is a noise complaint, two places to report that, you can report it to Community Development Department Code Enforcement Division, which works underneath me, or you can report to Police Department. Police Department actually has the equipment to measure, to measure the decibel level. And they go, and I've been on these calls, so it will actually go out when the offending noise is occurring, will stand on the location of the receiving property, measure that noise decibel, that noise decibel reading. And it's different for different zoning districts and at different times. I can't quote chapter and verse for you. But I will tell you, having been on a few of these calls, at roughly a hundred and seventy-some feet or fifty-eight yards away from any single noise source, it's gonna be hard to get a decibel reading that's high enough to trigger our noise level. So those trucks that come in, whenever they come in, and we're assuming a lot of things that we know when these deliveries are gonna be made, and how loud the trucks are gonna be, but assuming that they are at a certain time and have a certain volume, that volume has to be pretty darn loud to traverse fifty-eight yards to reach the neighboring property. And just having been on a few of these calls, it doesn't happen as often as you think.
And so does that make sense? If, if you feel, let's say this goes through and it's built, and there's a delivery at three in the morning, and you got your window open, and it's like, oh, that's way too loud, then there's two recourses, one is call the police, and they've got instruments that can measure it, or two, under Mark's group, they have the code enforcement, and they would come out and measure it. And then if it did violate the noise ordinance at that time, then there would be repercussions, and they could address the violation with the operator.
One last question.
Okay, Molly.
I figured that some of this hour stuff, and that was not just, is this something the city council can get involved in?
I don't think so. They have to go by the code.
It's a recourse with the Board of Adjustment.
You know, the Board of Adjustment basically told us, all we are is here to say, well, they can have a gas station there. That's all, that's all our purview, that was what they told us. So I mean, a lot of this stuff, they just didn't even, didn't wanna hear, didn't even answer. So, so we thought, okay, we'll wait till we go to the ones that is purview. Now, all of a sudden, we find out, nobody can do anything about it.
I spoke to one of the persons at the Board of Adjustment, and she said, make sure that you go to the Planning and Zoning Commission to express your concerns. So, there you go.
Yeah, I don't, I can't, I can't explain that. Whatever they decide dictates what we can do or not do. So if I'm saying this correct, and I'm looking at Chris again, if there were a time to have raised issues regarding constraints around hours of service or operation, it would have been at that hearing, and would have been subject to their purview as far as conditioning their granting of the waiver.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, our city code has a very specific set of criteria that the Board of Adjustment looks at in determining whether or not to approve a special use permit and the conditions that they might place on it. I do think that it's unusual. I've never seen, you know, I think it's unusual to place hours limitations on businesses in that setting. I mean, I think there is a distinction between what government gets involved in and what the private marketplace determines. And so they, they had, the Board of Adjustment has certain powers in granting a special use permit, and they look at a lot of factors. It's all set forth in the code. And they, in this case, made their determination to allow the special use, and there are no conditions that they place upon it.
Except for the number of pumps.
Except for the number of pumps, yeah, right.
And the car wash.
And a large convenience store.
So what you're saying is the Board of Adjustment is the final arbiter in this?
For that particular question.
How do we appeal the Board of Adjustment, then? What do we do? How do we appeal their-
To district court, I think. That's, that's, that's where, that's where decisions, again, as I was saying, as the chairman said, the Board of Adjustment is not a political body. It doesn't get, those don't get appealed to the, to the city council. So it's, I can point you to the section of the city code where the appeal rights are described. And I'm happy to do that.
One, one more comment with regard to the landscaping. We appreciate all the trees that are going in. If you can have some more low-density plants put in to mitigate the lights and the noise, that would be of help. But apparently, everything that we're asking for here doesn't really matter, but I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Elaine Nelson. I live with my neighbor in the duplex that's right on the corner, that sits right behind the entrance off of Fifty-third. If you looked at the landscape, you could see where my home sits, along with my neighbor Connie. We are very aware and are very grateful that so much attention has been given to the landscaping and the trees and added, all of that. Thank you, and we thank the site plans, planners for that, for listening. I do have continued concerns, though, around traffic that is so close to our properties, where not only are there cars going in and out, but there are large trucks, there are semis, there are tankers going in and out of that corner. So close to where we live as a residence, so close to where pedestrians are crossing on the walking path. And even though there's a buffer line there, it seems not big enough for what's happening right behind our door. Both my neighbor and I have said, if you're welcome to come stand on our deck and take a look and see what it's like. You are indeed welcome to do that. We are concerned about the twenty-four-seven hours. I'm aware of law. And as an ordained pastor, I understand the need for law and the importance of law. I'm also aware that part of community living, and especially for you who are city planners and people who work for this city, that it's not only important to follow the code, which I am grateful that you are, even though, and that you have authority over when you follow that code and when you decide to make a variance with that code, which happened in this last year. My concern, then, is asking when and where one chooses to create a variance, depending on one set of values. And one chooses to not make a variance descending, based on some other notions. I'm not sure how many of us here are from the association that sits right behind. Would you raise your hand if you're here for that? There's a lot of us here, and you've received word from many people. We understand that there was to be a gas station there. But we understood it to be much smaller. And yet you, as a community, people, leaders of our community, chose to change the variance, so that could be different. And we have, and then are told that that's just the way it is, which is uncomfortable for those of us who are citizens of this community, at least for me. And I would hope that as decisions are made and variances are made and laws are followed. But there is also concern for not just law, but for community. And there's also concern, not just for law, but what it's like for a citizen to live in this community. And you consider not just law and money, but consider that there are people that live here, with grandchildren and children, and all kinds of, and many of us, this is our investment of retirement. And yes, we know life happens, and yes, we know that, deal with it and get on with life. Of course, we understand all that. We've lived a lifetime of that. But we would hope that when it comes to where we live and how we live and what we live for, that there would be a variance that recognizes that as well. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I just got a couple more comments. On the, on the exit to Lot Two, which is a hundred eighty-three feet down from Lot One, it says right in and right out. So that means you cannot turn left out of the exit. Is that what I understand?
Let's, let's get our drawing up with where you're speaking. He's gonna pull it up.
On the drawing I have, anyway.
Is that- This is on the Middle Road?
Yeah, on the Middle Road, exactly.
It's on Middle Road?
Yeah.
So what we have told the developer is, as traffic continues to increase, which it will, on Middle Road, if we, if we experience any issues with left-turning movements there causing issues at the roundabout, that will be forced to become a right-in, right-out. And almost certainly, the ultimate design of Middle Road will include a median there that would prevent full access in the future. So we have made them aware that that will be a requirement in the future upon full build-out, or if we see any other issues in the short term. Something similar to actually what happened at their Devil's Gone Store, where the right-in, right-out was not being followed, people were still going around, and the city had to come in and install those barriers, so that's-
I still see them around the barriers at Starbucks. You know, I play golf at Palmer, and they come right around the barriers of the restaurant. It's just like, so that doesn't really stop them. But you know, if you only have one entrance on, I mean, Fifty-third, everyone has to exit there, too. I mean, that's-
No, depending on which direction. And the other thing we have to remember is, you're not exiting, so if that's a right-out, let's say, for example, on Middle Road, you're not exiting and turning into what, in most cases, is a traffic signal. It's only gonna let you go one way. You're exiting into a roundabout that will let you go in any direction you need to go.
Yeah, but I mean, you gotta go out and around. All I ask from the Quickstar people is, did they do a traffic study at all? Because there's nothing there at nine o'clock, nine to five. I mean, there's no reason to be open. You're wasting salary, you're wasting time at lights, and I realize they're in Wisconsin, and they bring a lot of their store stuff down from Wisconsin. And a lot of deliveries, like the lady said, are at night, because I go by Quickstars. I might be out late at night sometimes, and I see the trucks there. So it's a concern, I can understand that. I mean, the truck breaks and everything else. But I think I got everything there. But yeah, they can just consider the twenty-four hour thing, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
The last thing kind of on our list was, and I'm not sure, again, this is the right people to talk to. I just, we just gotta find out who to talk to. We want to put a sign like the North, oh, it was essentially H2 has, posted twenty-five mile speed limit on our portion of Red Fox Road. One was put on the, on the, the north one because of the construction going on up there. And I know you're gonna disagree with this, but we kind of lived with this before when people were working on roads and stuff in there. We're, for people that live east of us, we're kind of a shortcut to go south on Middle Road. They come buzzing through our thing. Normally, under normal circumstances, but I can, when and if you start to work on that roundabout, we're gonna have a lot of traffic there. And we, probably nothing to do by it, but we would like to have a posted twenty-five mile.
I can take care of that, sir.
And enforce it, too.
Maybe a speed bump.
Well, those are two much different things. Enforcement, obviously, would be police, and unfortunately, they're not here. We do not, we have two trial neighborhoods that we have done speed bumps. Council has not approved to have any further installed anywhere in the city.
All right, yes, sir.
How's it going, guys? I'm Lucas Olson. I've lived here my whole life, I'm seventeen years old, probably the youngest guy in here.
We won't hold that against you.
I just wanted to, like, express my disdain with this plan, because it's like incredibly redundant, useless. I mean, if you think about, like, kids coming back from school and all that, they gotta, I already passed, like, two Quickstars going back. This is, it's just getting out of hand, you know? And, and yeah, it's just, you guys kind of already went over this, but people live here, right? And I'm, I'm like, in the, to get to my house, it's directly through three Quickstars, so it's just ridiculous. And this might be more of a, like, a back thought or whatever, but nobody's really mentioned crime yet, because I was just wondering, because we live so close to Interstate Eighty that, you know, people can get on and off it within a mile to get to the Quickstar, right? And I've seen that the third most common violent crime comes from convenience stores and gas stations and all that, right? So, you know, you can see full-on robberies, just a show-up in, like, these little residential areas, you know? And that's basically it. You guys kind of went over it mostly. And I just ask, you know, step back, really look at it, it's not, you know, what it seems. It's just kind of a whole, it's just a gas station in a residential area, it doesn't work, you know? But that's pretty much it. Thank you, guys.
All right, appreciate it, thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Marlon Vols, I live at Fifty-One Thirty Red Fox Road. I'd just like to mention, I think an obligation of the city is to protect its citizens. And this roundabout and the filling station is right in the middle of a residential area. Unlike a lot of the other filling stations, their houses are big nursing homes and so forth. It's, it's right around it, so this isn't a commercial area. It's a residential area that happens to have a roundabout. Filling Station Company Quickstar wants to build a filling station on, so it's a little bit different from other locations like that. And one of the characteristics of a residential area is that there are people out walking. Every, excuse me, every, every morning, I take my dog out for a walk, and I see a lot of other people out there walking. I see bicyclists, and I see there are people like me that aren't as agile as we used to be, who are out there walking. And right now, I hardly have to pass anywhere, any driveways or other things, where there's a lot of traffic that I have to contend with. With this filling station in there, I'm, you know, I back into where the filling station would be located. And so I would have to pass over where cars are going in and out of this filling station. And the other people that I pass, some of them are on walkers and so forth also. They would have to do the same thing. And so I, I think this new filling station obviously is gonna create a safety hazard for anybody that's- for anybody that's out there biking, walking, hiking, or or doing anything else which a residential neighborhood is characterized by. And so I think this new filling station is going to pose a a real safety hazard for, you know, those of us who are pedestrians, which we have a right to do in our residential areas to go out and and walk in and enjoy the area. And so I think this this new proposed filling station is going to be a real detriment to our ability to enjoy our home and the area that we've been living in. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Carl Kowalski, 5341 Judge Roads, Century Heights, so not not too far down the road from this site plan. Uh, had three principal concerns. I think many of them pretty well covered. The first being the traffic at the roundabout. Whilst I heard the city's point of view, having transited that roundabout daily for the last 10 years, I can tell you that adding a filling station and increased foot traffic, road traffic rather, will create problems. Uh, there are already problems out there every day. I see them every day. It it is not a great place to be. And when we increase the the amount of traffic, we'll see that be exacerbated. Additionally, as we look at the the road cuts, uh, where the the traffic will come in and out, their proximity to the roundabout will further exacerbate those problems. So I do believe there is a significant safety concern at the roundabout. I won't belabor it. We've spent a lot of time on it and and we've we've talked about it. I urge the the Planning and Zoning Commission to evaluate that, to really study what the potential impacts might be. We've had a lot of anecdotes here. I haven't seen or heard of any evidence where we've actually done a study with respect to this site plan and the safety of the roundabout. The second principal concern is with respect to the use of the Ped Bike Path. My children, myself, use that path almost every day. When we cross roads where there are traffic, obviously, we have to be careful. Two road cuts on that path in such a a short span has a high probability of causing my eight year old to get run over, frankly. So I worry about that quite a bit. In addition to the safety hazards posed by the two road cuts, I believe the additional traffic at the roundabout will make it difficult to use the multi-use path. For instance, trying to transit the path to the north, crossing the roundabout twice to get to the to the north from uh, from the east side, from where this this plot is, will be much, much more difficult for the average user of the path to achieve, given the increased traffic that we see around the roundabout. So those are the two of the three principal concerns. I have one more that's related to sort of health and human safety. And I'll read some, just some brief excerpts from some studies that have occurred since the original site plan 20 years ago that we referenced so many times. So maybe some new information for the P and Z to consider. But before we get into that, I'm interested in where the fuel tanks themselves will be, especially as they pertain to the Iowa Administrative Code. And I'll highlight those in a second, but I'm hoping Quick Star or someone with this site plan can indicate on the plan where the tanks will actually be.
I think she's got that. Do you have that?
I believe they are delineated on the site plan. But I would defer to the Cookstar representative to point that out exactly.
She's nodding yes.
I believe that's what I thought. It's the square.
That rectangle.
South, just south of the pumps.
Do we have a distance from the tanks to the residential and the tanks to the bike path?
I didn't.
Give me a second, Taylor.
I can tell you just anecdotally that you're about 176 feet from the elevation of the rear of the homes to the overhang of the fueling island. It's about 100. So if you go from the overhang of the fueling island to the closest elevation of the homes, it's about 176 feet or 58 yards.
167 feet. And then is it a a similar distance, I guess, to the the multi-use path? It's hard for me to.
Probably a little farther.
It would be probably the same or farther.
So you are 380 feet to the multi-use path on Middle Road and approximately 260 feet to the multi-use path on 53rd.
Thank you. Uh, I I would ask P and Z to just be sure that they're looking at Iowa Administrative Code R661-221.41, which states, uh, among other things, that dispensing and the tanks must be at least 100 feet away from any residence or place of assembly. So that'll that'll become important in just a second, but do please, I I implore you to ensure that that we're compliant with with those codes. Which brings me into my last sort of three bits of of feedback or the last bit of feedback. And I have three short studies to kind of read here that all center around human health. The first I would highlight is a study from the American Journal of Public Health, published in 2021, and just an excerpt excerpt I'll read here. Quote, "Many studies found significant relationships between residential proximity to environmental hazards and adverse health outcomes, such as adverse pregnancy outcomes, including an increased risk for central nervous system defects, congenital heart defects, oral clefts, renal dysplasia, limb malformation, chromosomal abnormalities, preterm births, low birth weight, small for gestational age birth, fetal deaths and infant deaths." So again, that was a 2011 study from the American Journal of Public Health. Uh, an additional study from the American Journal of Epidemiology in 2017. An excerpt here says, quote, "It seems fairly clear that there is significant, there is a significant association between CL, in this case, childhood leukemia, among another of other diseases referenced, and residential proximity to gas stations." So two, uh, two journal articles posted in the last 15 years that highlight the hazards to human health. And the last one that I'll read is actually from Columbia University. Uh, this is also published and a brief excerpt here. So in addition to these health and human hazards, we talked about the Iowa code. This study goes on to say, "A study led by environmental health scientists at Columbia University Mailman School of Public Health examined the release of vapors from gas stations, vent pipes, finding emissions were 10 times higher than estimates used in setback regulations that determine how close schools, playgrounds and parks can be to facilities. Findings appear in the Journal of Science of the Total Environment." So I would implore the city of Bettendorf and frankly, Quick Star to evaluate these studies, thinking critically about the impacts to health and human safety in addition to the concerns that we've raised regarding the use of the bike path and the roundabout itself.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay.
All right. Good evening. My name is Casey Bonger. I'm a real estate manager for QuickTrip and QuickStar. So thank you all for coming out tonight. Um, I appreciate the feedback and I do understand your concerns. As as I think the commission has stated, this is a zoned commercial and our use is acceptable in this area. Going in, knowing this, um, we talked with the developer initially and recognized from the very beginning that it is, it does a but residential. And so we worked, um, you know, I think the developer did a good job when they were planning out the area to put the the berm and the landscape buffer between the two zoning zones. But in addition to that, we just wanted, I I, we looked at different site plans and felt the one that is proposed keeps the car wash noise as far away as possible for from the residential. And with that increased additional landscape buffer, just provides that additional buffer for lighting and noise to the residents to the east. So, um, just to, I guess, hit on a few items and concerns that came up. We, this operation would be 24 hours. We want it consistent across our stores. So I think people had mentioned that, um, there may be some stores that are closed at night and that is largely due to shortage of employees right now. It's a lot of businesses are short on employees. So, um, we do like to offer or be available for guests overnight if needed. There are people that work, um, or are up overnight and so we want to provide our services to them. In regard, so another item I think was the noise in regards to deliveries and trucks. So we are a little different than other convenience store operators in that we're vertically integrated. So 70% of our product in our stores is made in our, at our La Crosse campus and is delivered to our stores every day. So that is the majority of our, what is in our stores. So we have one truck per day that comes to that store. We, um, I don't know in this area exactly when their deliveries are. It can vary a little bit. But I would say more than likely it's in the morning at some point. They are the straight trucks, uh, because it it a long, longer semi truck. Because it isn't just, yeah, it isn't a delivery just for this store. They have deliveries for other stores in the area.
That's the size of your truck that would come in then?
Yes, correct. So we won't have, I mean, we do have some soda and beer vendors that will make deliveries, not daily. But we won't have the bread vendor, the donut vendor, hostess vendor, ice cream vendor. So it really limits the amount of deliveries.
What about the gas delivery?
That doesn't come every day, but yes, there will be a fuel delivery usually. I don't know how often. It really depends on how how busy the store is. I would say every three days maybe, depending on the volume of the store.
Dumpster?
However, often they come, whether it's twice a week, yeah, whatever that is.
And just a note to the dumpster, uh, because I raised that question to the dumpster is in the farthest point over by Middle Road next to the car wash. So, um, that was minimized as well.
When does it, where does it come in?
Where does it come in?
Right on on off of 53rd.
It's it's on the far west side of the building.
There's there's no way for us to determine.
Yeah, that's up to the refuse company, but yep, go ahead. Sorry.
Um, and then I guess there was also a question on, do we really need another Quick Star here? And we would not invest millions of dollars in a development if we didn't think it would work or would is not a good location for it. So we do think this would be a great location and we continue to see Bettendorf expand this direction. So, um, we do feel this would be a good location for a Quick Star. In regards to the tanks, I think your question on distance, we're federally federally regulated. And so we go through strict regulations when installing fuel tanks. So that is something that, um, we do on every single store of ours when installing them.
Study on the health effects of fueling stations in residential areas?
I'm not familiar with that.
It should.
I I know we do what we need to and are required to do at our stores.
Understood, but there is recent data that suggests that.
Hey, hey, we we let you present it and now she's got the floor. So go ahead.
So then I think the last item is the sign height that that was brought up. Obviously, the nineteen and a half foot sign is within our, the sign code. We can take a look at that and I'll discuss it. I'm not a sign expert, to be honest, but we want to make sure, um, that we can fit the pricing and our sign on it and be visible. So we can talk, um, I can talk internally with our engineering team and sign team prior to city council, uh, to have a better idea on if we can lower that or to decrease the sign height. Are there any other questions?
Got one question over here.
There aren't any diesel part or truck.
We really need to follow decorum.
We're gonna have to get you, get you up to the, the question is, are there any diesel pumps in there?
We usually do on the end of the canopy, usually have one or two.
But it's not a separate truck fueling.
It's not a, no, it's not a side diesel high flow. It's not, no.
All right, Casey, anything else?
That is it on my end.
Okay.
Thank you to the commission for reviewing this tonight.
Appreciate the follow up answers. Anyone else? Last call from the audience. Yes, ma'am.
Just another question regarding the tanks, underground tanks. How does, there is an underground creek that goes through there somewhere. I haven't studied it. But how does that fit with, um, the under, uh, underground water flow? And the protection of water and environment under the ground?
That's not in our purview at all. That would be addressed through regulations and building.
I think what she's referring to is this, part of this site used to be a creek, an open creek. We have two very large storm sewers that run through a portion of the site. So there is no open underground flow. That's all contained within concrete pipes. So we have two six by 10 concrete boxes that carry storm water through there.
And in the state of Iowa.
So it's not groundwater.
In the state of Iowa, underground storage tanks are permitted and licensed and inspected by the state. It's not a city function. It's a state function. There are also federal regulations which haven't mentioned. So those have to be permitted, inspected, annually licensed with the state of Iowa, Iowa DNR.
All right. Last call from the audience. Seeing none, we'll come back to the commission.
I guess I have one follow up question. In regards to, I know we kind of talked about this earlier a little bit, but safety for the pedestrian walk on the bike path and all the families in the area that like to use it and other folks as well. Are there, is there signage like yield to pedestrians or anything that you put up at all to help with that?
We do not do that for individual driveways.
Okay.
I mean, you have clear sight lines there. You know, we already talked about how they may have to remove a few trees to make sure those are, we would have those at every single driveway. So I mean, the, I understand that this has been vacant and there's been no crossings in there for 20 years and the trail's been in for 15 years. All of our trails, literally every single rec trail we have in the city that's in the right of way, has driveway crossings, period.
And street crossings.
So we just adapt to it and use it.
That is the nature of development, unfortunately. You know, these are not separated trails that are located in parks where you don't have to worry about vehicles crossing. They are adjacent to roadways and we have to provide access to someone's property, which means you will have a driveway crossing, period. End of story.
I think the best example of that is you go up and down Devil's Glen, which is a heavily used section of the bike trail. And there is driveway after driveway after driveway with high volume users. So it is a change. You're going to have to operate differently than you have in the past and awareness of traffic. But you have to be aware of traffic wherever you go and Bettendorf is growing. That's the reality of it. We have 10,000 more people than we used to in the last census.
We we are very blessed to have the trail system that we do.
It's awesome.
Absolutely.
These are, 90% of them are located along arterial and collector streets. That's the whole point. They provide the maximum benefit to most people. They take you to connections between them. Those are also the busiest streets. So they're going to have driveways. They're going to have crossings. That's how they operate.
Brent, when we we talked about the roundabouts out at TBK, just in discussion. There was some conversation about pedestrian safety and steps you were planning to take out there.
Yeah, there's there's standardized signage that goes with all the crossings which we have out here.
So it's not everything that's available is at that corner already?
Potential change that as we continue to monitor these, you can look at replacing standard signage with rapid flash beacons. But again, those would be at public crossings, not at a driveway crossing.
I'm, and and that's what I'm thinking about, the public crossings.
Yeah, we we've continued to upgrade those across the city and we may need to do that here.
Okay.
We are not, I should say, we are not installing them in TBK right now. The the plan is, no, they will be standardized signage originally. Yeah, and there's a lot of barriers crossings you can utilize.
Well, from a CIP or Public Works, whatever standpoint, if if this roundabout is eligible for that improvement, I think the sooner it happens, the better.
We'll continue to monitor them. You know, that would be just the three legs there, for example, that's $60,000 worth of equipment at each location.
It's a good investment.
Last call.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve case 23-055, site development plan, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I would ask one additional dimension to that subject to staff recommendations relative to the sign, that the freestanding or monument sign be considered for reduction in height to mutual satisfaction of the city and the developer. Could it be acceptable if you're modifying your motion? And you're second?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-055, subject to staff recommendations and the additional requests that the height of the sign be looked at. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those, same sign. Close, same sign. Okay, 23-055 is recommended for approval, which would take us to commission updates.
Mr. Chairman, no update. Thank you for your attendance at our conference of planning meeting. We're gonna get back to you with an updated future future land use map here in the coming weeks. We've taken all the input. It's been itemized. It's been drafted on a new map. Staff's still working through that.
Okay. That's it?
That's it, sir.
All right. Motion to adjourn. Okay.